Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, December ninth, South Windsor Town Council Special Work Session Meeting to Order. Row call please. Councillor Buganski.
President.
Councillor Lewis. Councillor Balboni.
President.
Councillor Carey.
Present.
Mayor Del Nicky.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea.
Present.
Councillor King. Councillor Fitzgerald. Councillor Pendleton.
President.
Okay, moving on to item three, item for discussion is our park and recreation facility. Do we have any councillors who would like to start before I bring up either our director or our facilities manager? Okay. Yeah, they are. Yes. Or our Chair of our Public Building Commission, Mr Montana, did you want to start or? Did I put you on the spot?
Good evening, Matthew Montana, Public Building Commissioner. We were called this evening, I'm not sure if you're looking for a presentation from us or not, can't hear me?
No.
Better, worse?
I think, I think they're gonna fix the audio too when we're talking.
Better? So, I don't know if you were looking for a presentation from us, I did not bring one, just based on the last time, couple of times you're here from what Tom Arkery, the hired architect we had, or from our owner's rep. So, I'm not sure where you're looking from us, I thought we had left our last meeting that we were gonna be doing a group working session with all the various people with Board of Ed and Planning and Zoning and everyone working together to kind of find a common goal for what we need for schools, what we need for Park and Rec and building stuff. So, I'm not quite sure what you're looking from us tonight.
Well, I think what my fellow councillors here, what they were looking for was more of a consensus, I think we're gonna talk and have like a consensus just to see where we're going, 'cause I know this was a three-phase plan and just to, and I think a lot of folks were looking for more of the Phase One plan and moving forward on that, so.
So, based on, you know, what we voted on the past few weeks, we met with Planning and Zoning, they were definitely in favor of the scheme that we had with repurposing, they were, they enjoyed seeing that they were repurposing a public building that we actually had here in South Windsor that was owned by the town. So, they were in favor of the schemes, they did, they had favoritism towards Option Two, I believe, it was easier to build, which kept the fields intact for the baseball and such. We did have a vote on the Public Building Commission in the month of November, so that was a favorable vote in favor of repurposing Orchard Hill into a new Park and Rec building, excuse me. So, I think that kind of ends where we were with the previous resolution that was in place, asking for the Public Building Commission to work with the town people here to find a new home, so we have done that. Based on what, how the Public Building Commission has voted, we think that is the best means of repurposing a building and turning old Orchard Hill into a new Park and Rec building.
So, you're saying Concept Two is what was favorable from Planning and Zoning?
That was from Planning and Zoning, correct, Option Two.
And Public Building Commission, did they have any, which option they were choosing, or were they waiting for us to decide?
It was more of, with the Public Building Commission, we are looking for a new home, it wasn't favoritism towards one option or the next, we just wanted to say it does fit there on the site, so that was kind of what the resolution was depicting, so that's what we're reporting as.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Mr Montana, Councillor Pendleton?
Thank you, you had just mentioned the PBC was charged with finding a new home for the Park and Rec, uh, Park and Rec Department, forgive me, in the Commission and our other building maintenance department. So, in hearing that, the PBC is presenting Orchard Hill as a recommendation, when in fact, we didn't hear, the council didn't hear from PBC on other locations or building something new on a different location. We didn't hear a lot about that in the beginning, so I'm a little taken aback with where we're going with this, with, this is your only option, is what I'm being given pretty much, and I kind of want to sit back and say, hang on one second, you know, that's what I'm saying in my head, not to you. But I'm just saying, where is the other locations, 'cause even looking and reviewing the ordinances of what your charge is, is to find a location site for the town departments or building, I'm sorry, the building. So, we were never really presented options, too many options, we were given this option, so I'm a little taken aback by that. When the presentation was presented to us with the Priest Farm, with, you know, Nevers Road, you know, at one point, the Park and Rec may have gone into LA Fitness, the old LA Fitness building, you know, so to come down to this decision by PBC and not present it to the council or the other options so we can make a better decision. You know, I'd like to hear what the PBCs.
So, prior to the PBC, where there was, Town Council had formed a subcommittee that was then defunct, where the subcommittee had met for four-plus months, meeting with the town people, with Mike Maniscallo, other people, with Board, with Park and Rec. We went, did research Priest Property, we researched Nevers Road, we hired, we researched a couple of other facilities here in town, had hired Colliers International, went through the research of repurposing buildings, looking at new sites, what we can do. Colliers International did some test fits for both sites, for both Orchard Hill as well as Nevers Road, reported back that that was gonna be some of a new building around eighty million dollars, is what they had done. So, once Town Council, last November, whatever it was, October, went through and said, okay, we're gonna get rid of that committee that was formed, we're now gonna charge the PBC with the direction of finding a new home. So, we've gone through, we've done that same direction, I've heard from a few members that we're not going to go build an eighty million dollar building, so we want to do whatever we can with repurposing the building.
I'm sorry, a few members of what, who?
Both Town Council as well as Town Manager have told me directly, we're not gonna go build an eighty million dollar building. So, we as PBC focused our time in hiring out both colliers and an architect with Tom Arkery, from Quisenberry Arkery, to focus our time and function on where they are right now in Old Orchard Hill, so that's what we did.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I never said that, just for the record, I've never said that to anyone on PBC, and I don't know why PBC would take that direction from a few people when the council has the final decision on what to do with us. That's unfortunate that the PBC took that stance and listening to the Town Manager, I think the most important thing for the Town Manager would be that his two departments that are presently in this structure have a nice home to go to. I wouldn't expect him to say something like that, and I would hope that he didn't, however, anyone else sitting on this council, if they did do that and you guys follow that lead in that direction, I'm sorry you did, and I'm sorry that anyone told you that, 'cause that was not a group decision by this council.
Yep.
So, and I do have to address, the last time you came to speak, you said it three times, I was told not to raise the taxes, we were told not to raise the taxes. It's already been raised, you've already spent money, it's already going up, it's already, it's happening, and you would directly looked at the Republicans when you said that, this is not a political adventure. This is a smart endeavor for our whole community, our community as a whole, and that's why all of us need to consider that, this is not a political, yay, we did it, no, that's not what this is. This is what the community needs, we need something, our departments need something, so for us to make an educated decision, we need all the information, not just what's chosen by a few or some that want to hurry up and rush this through. And my concern is the implications of the finances on our community, we do need a building, it's been in need for years, in a location, in a home, but I want to build for twenty-five years out. I want to build something that's worth the value that we're gonna be getting out of it, is this structure gonna be good twenty-five years out? Is the Board of Education gonna come back in and say, we need to make a sixth grade academy, 'cause Timothy Edwards is busting at the seams, because everybody from our elementary schools are now in our middle school, what are we gonna do? We need to think out of the box, and we need to think to the future, I know I'm rambling, I'm sorry, but I would really like to have some semblance of this process and not just have this presented by the gentleman and say, here's your choices. Wait, what? This is our choices, and these are our plans, and it was, it's called the Community Center, and that right there was not making me very happy, but to see this whole thing and go, what? We didn't ask for extra buildings to be built, we didn't ask for any of that, that's, someone came up with that, I get it, let's build it for twenty-five years out, but we need to really stop and think about this, do we want to spend the eighty million or do we want to spend the twenty? Do we want to build something that's going to be, you know, out there that's gonna last for quite some time? I appreciate what the Public Building Commission has done, I appreciate colliers for presenting, the architect for presenting this, yeah, it's. Excuse me, I appreciate, you know, everything that has been presented to us, but truthfully and honestly, I'd really like to just go back and say, what have we looked at, why can't it go into Nevers? Why can't, why would Nevers be the worst spot when LA Fitness would have been the worst spot, but I'm just saying, why, why would Nevers be so bad?
It, it's hard to go backwards, and so, when we initially were trying to work out with that defunct group, the committee that we had, we had asked about purchasing LA Fitness at the time.
Right.
And it kind of came with the pool, it has a great benefit, but we were told not to investigate it because it has a tax base to it. So, we stopped that.
Right.
We looked at both Nevers Road, and we were told by various people that we've tried to put fields, tried to put facilities there before, and it's not gonna win in the town. So, then we started focusing on Orchard Hill, the program and the buildings that you see there, those are all based upon what Park and Rec had given to us as a program that our town can grow to.
Okay.
So, that's why you saw the various buildings that are there, they're all part of the program that was developed and given to us, of what they, what Park and Rec thinks they need for the future. So, we didn't go and just say, huh, we'll start throwing buildings here, that's not what was our task, our task was to meet the goals by Park and Rec, and that's, it, some of it fits in inside Old Orchard Hill, some of it has to grow outside of it, it won't all fit there.
Thank you, I think I'm gonna stop for now, I, I appreciate you listening to me just vent a little bit, because it's been very frustrating, I didn't expect, this is not my expectation, I'm just saying that, because I didn't hear other options. I do want this to pass, our Park and Rec Department needs something, our building maintenance department needs a home, they need a good home, but they need a home that's gonna last and that's gonna be appropriate for our community for twenty-five, thirty years out. We're investing a lot of money into this, and I think I'm gonna stop for now, thank you.
Thank you.
And don't forget, Councillor Pendleton, this was approved temporarily, as a temporary space from PMZ, we have to do something with the building.
Temporary?
But how long is temporary?
Right.
If you're out of ADA compliance, how long is the state gonna say, how?
Right.
And you keep putting it off, we can't, we don't have the time for building a new building, that's gonna take a long time, we can't use, I like your idea of something in the future using a different location, but how long is that gonna be, another five years down the road? We don't have, I don't think we have five years.
So, so are you suggesting we do a temporary solution with the ADA compliance at this point, and then maybe down the road, we build a new Park and Rec facility?
We can add on to the current building as a different phase, remember, there's three phases.
Oh, I see, so permanently keep it there, but right now do the temporary fixes.
It's not a, I think it would be a permanent.
Permanent fixes, but bring it up to code, so that's what you'd like to do. Is that the best location for it in our community?
Say again, please?
Is that the best location for it within our community? Is it a community involvement with the seniors going to the pool, the high school student team going to a pool, you know, I mean, is it, thank you, thank you. So, you know, just to take everyone, this, our whole community into consideration, and that's something we have to do, yeah.
I agree. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, couple things, thank you for coming again, I know, I think, like, the day after I was on the previous council, I met with Molly, literally the next day, and we were talking about this, and I got all these numbers, so I know it's been in the works for quite some time, so. And I, just to address, I think the last time this was presented to us, the new Community Center that was put there by mistake, it's not being called a Community Center.
Correct.
So, just to address that, that it was, it's a Parks and Rec facility, and I know when we met, we kind of talked like, what if this was in phases, like, everything you need now and a little bit more, you know, to foster the great ideas that you have, Molly, what would that look like? And I believe, like you said, you worked with them, and Phase One addresses all of those needs, while also getting the site ready for potential growth. And the architect and the contractor were here last time when they presented, and they did say the building itself, the structure is in great shape, and it's not like a temporary fix, it, like, if you were to flip a house and remodel it, it's basically brand-new, right? So, this, this is like full, complete, gut job, redo, redesign, all based off of the way Molly has described her current offerings and what she wants to do in the future, and allowing Phase Two and Three to also potentially go on that site someday. And I don't think it's a political thing, it's just a, just the reality of the way life is right now, you know, everything's expensive, so I think investing twenty million dollars into a building is certainly gonna raise taxes and certainly not gonna make people too happy. But if it's something that the community needs, then, yeah, I think there's, there's ways to go around figuring out how to, you know, let's, let's keep fostering what we're currently doing so well. We heard Molly at our last meeting list off a number of things that we're doing just this winter, right, and I think she said there's like eight hundred kids signed up for basketball alone. So, you know, we do offer a lot, and to know that this first phase, again, it's not a small amount of money, will allow her to do her job the way she's currently doing it, and even better, and all her staff and the kids that go there for all the programs. I think it's, I think it's a great, a great way to look at it, and opposed to, you know, you break new ground anywhere, that's, that's a new build, so you kind of, at that point, gotta go all in, right? Like you said, it's kind of hard to go back, so, and then to your point where, is it a good location, I've heard numerous people, whether it's the Board of Ed, whether it's parks, whether it's grounds, the vision of like a campus, right? You have, you have a beautiful new school, you have a middle school, you have fields, it just encompasses that, that campus kind of green, all right there, so I think it's, I think it's a great location. I think, again, repurposing a building is, is a great, a great thing, as long, you know, if the foundation was crumbling and the structure itself was bad and you had to just knock it down, then sure, but I do believe we have been presented, over and over now, all the information, and I think you've all done a great job, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councillor Carey?
So, I just want to check on a couple of things, it's my understanding that the committee that was put together to look at Parks and Rec and was, and then was disbanded, that was before my time, at least, that was the prior council, correct?
Correct.
And then also, the charge to the Public Works, or Public Building Commission, to look for a home for Parks and Rec, that also was the prior council, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to double-check that, as far as location, you know, Orchard Hill, or where, where the old Orchard Hill sits, sits on twenty acres of ground. You know, Nevers Road, well, you know, if we were going back, I don't know how many years, might make sense if we hadn't put the splash pad there, the farmer's market, the new outdoor exercise area, but I think, you know, there are a lot of things that have gone into Nevers Road that, you know, unless we want to do away with walking trails, that having used them regularly are used constantly. I don't really see that there's room at Nevers Park anymore, so I think that, you know, it's, I'm not picking places, but I know that people looked at Priest Farm and found that there were issues, right, with drainage and some other things, access, and never seems to me that there's a lot of things there already, right? So, Orchard Hill is a logical choice, and I think that for us to move forward, if this has been going on since the prior council, and now is going into this, a year into this council, we probably really want to move forward with something, because we are gonna run into an ADA issue with Orchard Hill. So, I suggest that we, you know, think about what it is we can do that helps the community, that meets the needs of the community, and that the Public Building Commission has done what we've charged them to do, and, you know, come up with some plans.
Thank you.
Councillor Pendleton? Oh, yes, Mr Balboni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councillor Pendleton, so I'll just quickly go in over, I don't have everything in front of me, but the original resolution basically asked the Public Building Commission to identify a site and building location, I think that's pretty much what you've done so far. And now we started to move ahead with planning, what we're gonna put on that site is what I'm understanding, is that we're doing, I've seen all these plans, probably a little bit more than the rest of the council, being the liaison to the PBC. I mean, there's a lot of work going into it, and I think you guys have done great up to this point, I just don't know if the town's ready to spend this kind of money, if they know what this sort of thing costs, just the ADA compliance stuff to stay in the building, I'm not even sure when that expires. When do we have till to get this stuff done, before we get, I don't know, kicked out or however?
So, I think we had this conversation in one of the previous meetings briefly, but the, so there's not a, there's kind of a ticking clock, but there's not a ticking clock. You know, we are able to be in that building temporarily, but the building is not meeting ADA compliance. As a result, in the event that someone were to come forward and say, this building is not meeting ADA compliance, I need access to the building, or I'm not having my needs met because of this building, the town could be in a situation where we're forced into compliance. In which case, that, those actions would be significantly more expensive, I believe I sent an email to the Town Council, probably two or three months ago, with a newspaper article, I want to say it was New Canaan or Cheshire, some community in the state of Connecticut where their town hall actually did not meet ADA compliance. And they were actually taken to the Attorney General's office, and the Attorney General for the state of Connecticut is now forcing that town to spend like a million dollars to bring that building into compliance. So, I think there, while there's not a, a specific ticking clock, there is a ticking clock, because it's, it's only a matter of time till somebody says, I wanted to go to this part of that building, or that part of the building, or I needed access to this, or I needed access to that, or that building is just not meeting my needs, whatever they may be. I know that's not the exact answer you want, but that's, that's about the best we got, so.
So, the other thing that I heard was that our fire marshal or fire inspector granted us temporary use, and we have to get this first four hundred and fourteen thousand to, see, to make him happy?
Sure, so part of, part of what's happened with the building going from a school use to a community use, that then brings into the picture the fire marshal and the building official, and they have the opportunity to go look at that building and say, okay, it needs to now have this, it needs to now have that. Seeing as it's an existing building, the fire marshal has granted us the temporary use of it, that being said, at some point, he will probably be saying, you know, hey, you gotta bring it into compliance, and we have to do extra things.
Is that completely at the discretion of our fire marshal?
Correct.
Thank you.
Additionally, I do think, though, it's important to be aware there could be liability associated with that, so let's just say there was some kind of bad scenario that does happen in the building, and the building isn't up to whatever code there may be, the town could be held liable in that scenario.
Councillor Pendleton?
I have a question, do we have a cost for Phase Two and Phase Three, please?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a cost for Phase Two and Phase Three, please?
I don't know if we have a cost for that, but it's probably gonna be in the sixty-seven total, so if you're at twenty, roughly forty-seven probably.
Forty-seven for each of those buildings, or?
Probably, I don't know the price, I'm sorry, I don't know the prices for the.
Okay, so we're gonna get up closer to the eighty million by adding Phase Two and Three.
Potentially.
So, we're gonna end up at the same number?
For some reason, I thought we were around sixty-seven to seventy, is the number I had in my head.
That's what I have in my head, too, from the last meeting, I think you said, so we're up around that, that, plus with the cost of everything else, so we're gonna end up in the same area, pretty much.
And that's, that's in today's dollars, so depending on when you build it out, potentially, yes.
Right. Right. So here again, you could look at building a brand-new building for almost the same price. And then I'm sure there's other ways besides um well, meeting the ADA compliance and we have our department, Mr. Clay Majors here on the ADA compliance stuff, if we, if I could ask him just a question? Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Um you know how I feel about ADA stuff, but is there a way to do this process right now without inserting an elevator with just putting the ramp in? And I know the big complaint was closing off the gym doors, which was gonna happen anyways. Is there a way to do this without putting in the elevator?
Is there a way to do, make the second floor accessible?
Yeah.
Not with a ramp, no.
To go up the staircase?
No. The ramp would be fifty feet long.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. And then if I may, may I call up Molly, Mrs. Keys, Director of Parks?
Sure.
I'm sorry? Yeah, thanks. How you doing? Thanks for being here.
Good evening, yeah.
Um so, and thanks for going to these meetings and participating. I think my question to you is, does any of these phases that are presented before us meet the needs of the Park and Rec Department completely for the next twenty-five, thirty years? What are we missing? Cause I know we're not getting it all in this one little package.
Well, I mean, so I sat down with Tom McCary, hmm, I wanna say it's been about six months now or so, um and we chatted about our current program use and then we also talked about uh future program use. So some of these concepts in the actual space, like the, the activity rooms, the playgrounds with the play areas outside the classrooms, the different entrance for safety purposes, that all is designed for future use, um like current and future use. So these concepts, if we did fully renovate that inside, I mean, they would, they would meet our need if we fully, you know, gutted and reimagine that space, right? Um cause right now its current function is typically like it's designed as a school. Um but when you're looking at like bird's eye view, um and you removed walls and made them flexible activity spaces, and if we were um making sure that we had enough parking and we had a dedicated preschool entrance and we had additional activity room spaces to host fitness classes or um our Jukito or yoga, um that flexible space and that um additional activity rooms, like they would meet the needs. And I think again, it would just be understanding though that right now you'd have to knock down the walls, you'd have to look at um how to best renovate the school. I know that it's been done um in other communities. I'm not an architect or a designer, so I can't visualize it, but I do think that if we imagined the space without the walls and without the staircase, um we could kinda reimagine that space and make it a flexible recreation space for the future. Um again, though, it doesn't solve the needs of the gym space and that's phase three, I think is what we said. So that would be my only other concern, right, is the gym space. Uh we wanna, we want an aquatics facility, I think that it is a need for our community, it's gonna be a growing need over the years. Um but the gym space is needed right now, so I think that's the only other concern, right? Um we utilize all of the schools' gyms and I think to have a space that's our own where we can control the um programming, the hours, what that space looks like, it would be a little bit more beneficial to the community.
And what happens to you and your programming while this is taking place?
You know, that's a great question. We've chatted about that internally, my assistant director and I, um to see some opportunities on how we can move around our programs. It's gonna be difficult. Camp would have to be in a variety of Board of Education buildings at the mercy of their cleaning and their projects. Um preschool, I don't necessarily have that answer right now on how we'd be able to function and run those programs. And a lot of our health and wellness programs and our enrichment youth programs, we wouldn't be able to operate unless we found, again, additional space within the Board of Ed um or the community center, so. And then administrative-wise, we would have to work out with the town on how we can make sure that would function.
So and on the other hand, you could say we're out while a new building is being built, that would include everything that you're asking for here and everything that's being presented in phase one, two, and three, and then you could just move into a new building. And then what about our building department? Will their needs be met? Are they being met right now and will they be met with this new? Do we know? The building maintenance department? And where would they go?
So uh our needs are being met at the current time. We have uh, we occupy four classrooms, excuse me, um four classrooms on a lower level, um workshop, office area, lunchroom, um and an inventory area for critical things that we need wherever we go. Um but yeah, we're, we're being, our needs are being met for sure.
Right now, but will it be met with any of the construction? Are, are they being met with the future build and renovation of that building?
Uh I don't think that aspect has been completely worked out yet, so I think that's still conceptually has to be kinda worked into the design.
And if it needs to be renovated where they're presently located, you guys have another location to go to?
You know, if somebody said to me, I can build you a new house, but you have to find a new place to go, I'd find a new place to go for my new house, yes. If I had to break it up into four or five different buildings, that's what I would do to get a new home for sure.
Okay. I remember them being downstairs in a little closet room, so we went from that, yes. So, oh, thank you. And so we don't have a new cost, but we, you know, close to eighty million, so that's what I'm saying. And to disrupt our Park and Rec Department programming while this is being renovated um just doesn't make sense to me when in fact we could just go ahead and, what, what concerns me too is if we renovate this for ADA compliance and we bring it up to code or whatever we have to do and then the Board of Ed comes in and says, we need the building back. We just, they can't, is what I'm hearing from the peanut gallery. So Mr. Maniscalco, thank you very much. Mr. Maniscalco, can the Board of Ed come back in and say we need this building?
So the, the old Orchard Hill School uh was given to the town as a town building, so it's no longer a school. So the Board of Education uh certainly could always come back to us and ask for it, but they wouldn't, the town could say no in theory. It's a different scenario than the whopping school uh was. Um in the scenario of the whopping school, we were, we were leasing that building from the Board of Education and paying them on a regular basis through an MOU uh for that building. So it remained a school under the control of the Board of, under the control of the Board of Ed, so it's a bit different in this scenario.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question from Molly. And then I'll go to Councilor Boganski. The floor that's not accessible right now, how many rooms are up in there?
Eight. Yeah, eight.
All right, so we make that ADA compliance, now you've got eight, eight more rooms accessible.
Correct. We do have human services utilizing one room for counseling currently.
But, all right, so that'll give you seven rooms for your programs.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you look in the, the concepts, we had chatted about um making that more of flexible meeting spaces and then some activity rooms because we are at capacity right now in the building for camp and looking at the big picture, we can't really keep those portables. Um I know Clay can speak to that and pretty much anyone in terms of the safety of the portables and the condition. So we're looking to remove those regardless and those have several spaces for the kids. So having the access upstairs would be beneficial for the programming and the growth of it.
Okay, so basically seven rooms, cause you said one is with human resource or human services, right?
For the time being, yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Councilor Boganski, you've been patiently waiting.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh I'm gonna circle back to PBC for a minute if I could. Sorry. Um I just wanna like close the loop on something that came up earlier. The other potential green spaces in town, Nevers and wherever else, were they thoroughly vetted in terms of potential for, for a new site? And what pros and cons list was done, what was delivered at least to you guys, if not to the council?
So we initially were looking at the large piece of land, the priest property that was on Sullivan Avenue. Uh we did some studies with Connecticut Traffic Control and such, trying to make an intersection where Ellington Road meets Sullivan Avenue to see if there's access to the site. It's a wonderful site, it's big, it has plentiful, a lot of space for, open space for fields and we were actually quite attracted to that initially. Um but then certain things, when we started getting to the traffic and with how many different traffic, um we were talking with Mike about there was a couple of different entrances and exits that we were trying to accommodate and it was difficult with traffic patterns along Sullivan Avenue. So we kind of lost interest in that. We narrowed it back down to really two sites. One was a portion of Nevers Road, I mean, uh Nevers Park, excuse me, as well as Old Orchard Hill.
Okay.
So those are the two that we had focused on. Um I know there's a lot of functions going on in Nevers Park. Um it is a big park and things can be relocated, paths that were put in back in the eighties, they can always be repurposed, it is a big piece of land. So just because a path crosses a certain location, as an architect, I'm more than certain you can relocate pathways and get things in there.
Yeah, understood. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that we had done some more due diligence rather than just jumped over everything right to, and I understand why we would wanna go here in terms of cost savings and, and everything else, but I just wanted to make sure there was some additional background on the other potential sites, so thank you for that.
Yes, and going back to some of the pricing, so the night, the pricing that we had done up with Colliers where it was either eighty million dollars for a new building at Old Orchard Hill or at Nevers Park, we still felt it was better being purposed, trying to do a master plan, getting into all the ball fields and things like that you would need at the middle school level, kinda repurposing some of that stuff so that your middle school had better facilities and such and kinda keeping everything there, working with Molly and her team for after-school events and things, it really made sense being in a location there. And if I could, let's address a few of your questions you had asked before. The, uh looking at the gymnasium, had a project cost about sixteen million dollars.
Is that phase two or three?
Either one, there was no, it didn't matter which one was done here or there. And then the natatorium was about twenty-seven million dollars. So adding those two together, around forty-three plus the twenty gets you around sixty-three.
What were those again, please?
You were about sixteen million for the gymnasium.
Yep.
That gives you about sixteen thousand square feet.
Okay.
The natatorium gives you twenty-seven million dollars, gives you twenty.
The pool? Is that what it's called, a pool? Is that just a fancy word for a pool?
Sure, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm an educated man, but not too many people know what a navatorium is. Okay, so it's a pool?
Pool.
Okay, so the pool would be twenty-seven million?
Twenty-seven million, that's about.
Thank you, sir.
A twenty thousand square foot building.
Got it. An aquatic, superior aquatic facility, also known as navatorium. Okay. It's a pool, all right.
And Councilor King?
Yeah, thank you. Um so I wanna follow up with Council Boganski's question. So and, and maybe I miss this me, I'm, I'm pretty sure I only missed like two council meetings. We did, you're saying we received a pro and a con for Nevers, for Orchard, for Priest? I just, I just, because there's, before you answer, just, just, okay.
Yep.
Cause you also said you talked to some people. I know I never got a call from you, so I don't know, and I was deputy mayor at one point. So the people that you talked to, you never came to the full council, so before you answer, I just wanna make sure, did I miss a meeting to Council Boganski's point where there was pro and con for Nevers, pro and con for Priest, pro and con for Orchard?
Nope.
Okay, cause that's, maybe I misunderstood his question to you because that's what I would be looking for before these other conversations that you alluded to earlier that you had with other people, because that's not what you were tasked to do.
We were tasked to find a site, one site. A site, so that is what we have done, based on the knowledge that we have learned, the pros and cons that we have learned.
Right, talking to other people, but you didn't talk to the council.
Talking to other people, finding out things we have found out.
Who were the other people that you talked to? Cause again, I, you didn't talk to me and I had a, I had a nice position on this council.
And I have not been at all the Town Council meetings either, so I don't know who passed what information to whom.
Well, no, you're the one that said that you talked to other people.
I, I've been.
You're the chair, right?
I am the chair.
Okay, so did someone else talk to other people?
I don't know what, potentially, yes.
Are you trying to say, I think.
I just wanna understand.
No, I know, but I think what he's trying to say is other people, meaning maybe.
Within the commission. Can I?
Oh, okay, okay.
In Park and Rec Commission with, with Director Keys.
Is that what you mean?
It could be that, it could be a vice chair. We got feedback to us on, on a task.
Okay.
That the best means would be to repurpose the building, so that is what we.
That's what I'm getting to.
That's what.
So essentially, what you're saying is, you might have been tasked one thing from the entire council.
Yep.
But in talking to others who weren't the entire council, you were instructed, eh, don't go after the Priest Farm, eh, don't go after Nevers, eh, why don't you focus on Orchard Hill? Now, this council knows, I'm all about repurposing. I think we spent too much money building when we could go after places that we already have, so I'm, I'm down with that. However, I just wanna make sure of the process that we went through and now that's been explained, so thank you very much. So that's who you talked to, other people, all right. My only follow-up question is, and maybe you or somebody else, I'm a couponer. I had to learn the hard way that I don't have a lot of money, so I need to figure out what are some other avenues to get money. I like to make money without using my money. Have we gone, cause I see another thing that we're talking about in terms of the task is where are we going to get, say, grants or other funding from anywhere outside of what the taxpayers have to pay, whether it's ADA compliance or new facility? Has, has the PBC looked at those avenues as well?
I do not believe we have. I mean, I know we talked with Mike initially about if there were any grants. When we spoke to the architect, there were uh things that you can do if, if a pool or natatorium pool is attached to a school system, that you can get money back that way. Um but obviously it does other things with insurance, the pool to the school system and other things, like there's challenges. I don't know of grant money outside of anything for energy, for upgrading an existing building though. Whether you will get some money back, there's monies out there for energy savings, for redoing your roof with all brand-new insulation, your fenestration or your windows on the outside with new, it's a, you know, better, better core things like, so you'll get some rebates back. I don't know of grants though for doing a, a Park and Rec building.
If I could just, you know, and I'm done. So um, so I might just make a suggestion that, so we have a, a state rep, we have a senator, they would probably be the best people to ask, cause other towns get those monies, and especially if they're connected to a school. But more importantly, this is not just going to be utilized, even from past conversations, by our town. And so if, I do know that if we are a destination spot, that we might be able to get funds because it's not just for South Windsor, it'll also be used by other towns as well. So that is just a suggestion, I would go after uh Rep. Del Niki as well as Senator Anwar and just say, hey, where can we get some money for that? So, my fault. Are we good?
Because if you were doing state or federal grants, you have to allow other communities just like the VMP.
Exactly, but we, but we do that already.
With VMP, correct.
And so I don't believe that uh when we're talking about this money, that we need to say, okay, this is gonna be, it's already a destination spot, quote-unquote, for other towns. Okay, we need, I don't know, half. And then that way it's not um hurting our taxpayers as much, even, especially if we would decide to build a new facility, so just putting that there. Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Um just to touch again on the point, cause I, I don't necessarily think people from the public, volunteers and boards and commissions are being treated very respectfully tonight, hearing them be called the Peanut Gallery and then sounds like being accused of having conversations they shouldn't have. To go back to the resolution, it stated to find a building and a site. Uh, Councilor King, whom I respect and agree with you on something that you've said both privately and publicly, you know, these boards and commissions. you know, these boards and commissions, go do your work, come to us. It's exactly what he did. So we don't, we trust them, they work hard, they're volunteers just like us, and that's what they did, and I appreciate that. And to the point of, they found a, they found a space, again, going back to the conversation I had with Molly about, can you phase this out? What are your, what are your absolute needs, and then what are your wants? See how you can phase it out. Sounds like, between the work that they did and the plans for the future that she laid out, they have found a spot that's going to save us twenty-plus million dollars, you know, doing the math. If all three of these phases get built, it was what, sixty-seven million, the total, right?
Sixty-three.
Opposed to add a new site with a building, getting it all up front, we got, anywhere, we kept hearing, from all over, eighty to ninety million dollars. So it sounds like, the folks in this room did their hard work, they did their job, they found a spot, and it could save the town twenty-plus million dollars. And, you know, we can put it on a resolution, or, put it on a referendum with three different questions, or just one at a time, and see what the town wants to do, and if they want to do it all at once, well, well heck, we, we saved them twenty million dollars by trusting these folks to, to do what they were tasked to do. So, just, you know, the, the facts are what they are. The resolution stated to do exactly what they did. Now, if we want to ask them, you know, for their notes and why they didn't look at the other place, I think we have the right to certainly-
No, I don't-
Hear that for sure, but the resolution didn't require that. Again, it was to trust. Now, if they came back to us and we said, we don't like it, here's another resolution, go find another spot, then, sure. But, I mean, it sounds like everything you did is, is the right, the right thing, so, that's all I got to say for tonight.
If I could, just reply to that.
Sure.
If you don't mind, quickly. But this isn't the only cost. What is the lost, what we could call inventory costs, building costs, for during this construction? Where will parks and rec go? That's a cost. Has that been discussed? Because I don't see that number on here.
It, it may be included, it may not be. So there are challenges with trying to fit out a building while you're in there. Do construction, there are challenges, most certainly.
And so what is, so-
Those details, it was not asked upon us to go fully design in detail a building. Those schemes, schematics you have in front of you, that is one firm's schematic design. We're not building from those drawings. That is a schematic fit-out from a, one design architectural firm. If, if the town council wants to build this, you have to task the PBC to then go out, hire an owner's rep, hire an architect with, with funds for those, to design those buildings. Those aren't working drawings, you can't build that. That is, that is a schematic design that does, shows that the building and the program fit in that area.
Thank you for bringing your architectural experience to us.
So if the town council tasked the Public Building Commission to bring back, to go back and get ADA compliance, elevator, bathrooms, roofs, boiler, and I think windows were part of that.
That's this, right?
And fire.
Fire.
Yeah, there's something with windows.
But if we said that to you as a consensus, or at the next meeting with a resolution, that's what you would go, you would got, hire your owner's rep and all that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and the list that, that Tom Arcary had presented, one of our meetings several months ago, there was a priority list of what needs to be done. We reported, I believe, at the last meeting or the meeting before-
I think this is it?
I believe it is, yes. I think you were handed that document on things that are listed in priority, what needs to be done. So out of that twenty million dollars, things can be deferred out a further time. They need to be done eventually, but the windows and things like that, they don't all have to be done immediately.
Right. Which I, which I see.
Because it says the total estimated construction is eighteen million, three seventy-five, and then projected building replacement cost, the thirty-five million, nine hundred. What is that?
So that, that means that, you know, to Liz's point, it is a challenge, that if you'd have to find a new home for a park and rec, that means demolishing old Orchard Hill, rebuilding entire brand-new building, only the square footage of what's there, would be about that thirty-six million dollar range.
That's about right.
Okay.
But once again, that's the challenge of, in the interim, where does park and rec go?
Right.
So, what's, the plan that you have there that Tom came up with, there are wings of the building, the facility, that could be online and active, with a park and rec in there, while various other, excuse me, other portions of the building are under construction. So it may take a little bit longer process, but it can be done.
And that's where we're getting in with the elevator, because it's over it, in that far corner?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And I think that's, that was my thought of doing the basic, what to get it up to ADA and the fire safety issues.
And once again, the design that we had with Tom, we hired him as someone that came recommended from our owner's rep from Colliers. Wonderful firm, they did a great design. If we can't guarantee as a PBC, when we go back out for an RFP to hire an architect, that they're going to come up with that same exact design, they may move the elevator and stair in a completely different location. But we know we need to do it to meet compliance. So the design that Tom came up, the end-all design may not look like that. That's just another challenge that the PBC would have to-
A different architect could put it somewhere else, but still make it work for the second floor.
Exactly.
Okay. Counselor Begansky?
Thanks. I just wanted to apologize if I wasn't, my lack of clarity on the, kind of the pros and cons things, I think it maybe created some. I wanted to make sure that you guys were doing the pros and cons list within PBC, not necessarily with outside parties, other than maybe P&amp;Z, who you are tasked to engage with, so that you could bring us the most logical, potential-
Oh, okay.
Project. That's, I, 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 I didn't, I didn't get my entire thought process out there, so, just wanted to make sure that they were internally pros and conning these potential sites, whether it's a green space or the existing Orchard Hill. So I probably left that part out and created additional questions, so, thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Counselor Pendleton?
I think the biggest question, well, thank you. Don't be so exhausted, okay? It's not that bad. Mr. Maniscalco, I think the largest question that we have here is the finances. When we have heard from the Board of Education on where we're heading with the enrollment, where you've heard about the board budget, and we heard about, you know, their plans to, for their facilities over there, to upgrade their facilities at the high school, and knowing where we're going to plateau in all the years heading forward, and the financial plan of this, and when it would be hitting the citizens, and you have the numbers now before you, so maybe we could figure out if, in fact, it does go to this location, once you show us those numbers, when we start paying that back, and we also have other things that are bonded now that we have to conclude, and our budgets that we have to think about, and the increase to those budgets. So I think the financial plan of this, and when it's hitting our town, is a very, very important piece of all of this.
Sure. That definitely is. You know, I think, if we, if, if the council were to say, we've decided on whatever that number is, I can certainly sit down with our finance director and look at our current debt, the projects that we know that are coming online, what that debt looks like, and then, we can figure out, you know, kind of a plan to present to everybody as to how that would be smoothed in over time, and what that would look like for, you know, the taxpayers in general.
Could you have, since we do have that number this evening, the total, total estimated construction cost base is eighteen million, three hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and fifteen thousand, without my glasses on, I could read that wrong. Just saying. So, roughly twenty million dollars on that. And then, but another fifteen million dollars would be, as you said, to knock down the building and rebuild a new building right there, and do everything from scratch, is that what you're saying? No? In the same location?
If you were to tear down Old Orchard Hill?
Yes. Is that the next number, projected building replacement cost?
That would be the thirty-six million, and that only gets you the program for what you have for current, Old Orchard Hill. So what, what, it doesn't give them the full fit-out of everything. It just kind of meets the needs of what they have right now programmatically.
Okay, alright. So, thank you. So if you could take that number of twenty million, roughly, because of the cost, and just figure out in what year we'd be paying that back, and what it would look like to the citizens of our community, and knowing the information from the Board of Ed, because their budgets, they're not going to come back with a small budget, when we have all those students to teach and the educations, and we have these students, I'm sorry, the teachers' contracts to pay, plus our own town contracts to pay. So, our budget, their budget, I mean, even if you use where we're presently at now, but we know it's going to go up, and just give us a year, when that's going to be impactful on our community, if we could do that.
So I mean, if you were to go to a November referendum, let's just say we play it out a little bit, so we would go to a November referendum, the PBC could start their work shortly after that. How long do you believe your design process would take, rough estimate? To get to your construction drawings and stuff for the twenty minute?
Are, so, if you're going to go out to referendum first to come up with a, because we, there is work that we would have to do, unless you're going to hold these numbers, the twenty million, go out to referendum in November, you're probably almost a year's worth of design time?
So a year for design, so that puts you to, so if we're November twenty, twenty-five to, so that you're November twenty, twenty-six, before construction starts, construction time would be?
There, there'll be portions of that, that you can do sooner, like the roof replacement, projects like that. It's, it's not a year process to do construction documents like that. You can finish that quicker, so that might be favorable for doing over the summer, when no one's there. So the construction doc, you can phase out the construction documents too, and do some, some things quicker than others. But you're probably still in about a year process getting the whole package done out to bid.
You're probably talking two years total, from the time a referendum is, is done?
Two years total for what?
So two years total for both your design and construction? And then, then you, and then you would see your debt probably coming on board. So you're talking-
Well, wouldn't we take the debt on board when we do the roof in the summertime, in twenty twenty-six?
No, so that's not how it works.
Okay.
So, essentially, once we get the bond authorization-
Yeah.
The town would front the cash out of our general fund.
Got it.
Or our fund balance, or, yes. And then, essentially, what would happen is, we would reimburse ourselves when we go out to issue that debt.
Okay.
So, you, and then, when we issue that debt, that's when that money would then come on board for taxpayers to pay. So, if we're November twenty, twenty-six, we had another two years, you're talking November twenty, twenty-eight? I mean, this is all rough estimates.
It may hit twenty, twenty-eight?
I mean, that's kind of when you're talking about when your, when your tax increase would potentially start to hit.
In twenty, twenty-eight? And then, if the Board of Education comes up with their plan for the high school renovation, but then we also have to look at the Board of Education budget, and where Dr. Carter has stated that it's going to increase with our enrollment, up into thirty, is it thirty-one? Something like that, where she's presented-
Something around thirty-two, thirty-three or something?
Thirty-two, thirty-three, so her budget's going to increase, and our budget's going to increase. So, this is going to be added on, you're saying, in what year, twenty-eight? That's going to be a rough year.
Actually, twenty, twenty-eight.
Yeah, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty is going to be rough years for our town, financially, financially, big time. I mean, that's, that's, that's the gist of it. And just what would this cost, you know, on top of everything? I'd like to see the financial plan, just to add all these other factors in there. And then the worst part of the whole thing is, we have capital improvements. And capital improvements is only funded, three million dollars every year, but there's also projects that have to be done with our infrastructure that also gets decreased every year, because it's never funded by the council, it's always cut. So we have other buildings that may need priorities of repairs, so, that's also something to consider. But the financial plan of our community is something that's, needs to be looked at, and answered. Thank you.
Counselor King?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point, I do want to thank you, Deputy Mayor. Sometimes in my frustration, perception is reality. And this is our first time having this communication, and so the way I may have come across may have been perceived in a, in a light that I did not intend. That being said, I am true on letting a committee do its work. However, when it comes to something like this, the only question, not the only question, but the reason that my questioning and frustration might have come the way that it did, is only because of past experiences where we may not have, where we may have been short-sighted, where we did not plan for, all of a sudden, our schools were going to blow up in the way that they have. So you take TE where it is right now, we build or even renovate, who knows if that TE is still going to be TE? No different than, I remember when I first moved here, before Pleasant Valley got rebuilt, and wanting to put our children over there, I really didn't realize, what are those things called, the temporary-
Modules.
Thank you, the portables. That was short-sighted. And I remember being on the council that following year, and everybody said, why didn't anybody think of that? And so, that, maybe that's where some of mine is coming from, where I'm like, okay, I understand it, but at the same time, even if this is twenty-eight, for somebody to say, well, why didn't they think of that then? We, our schools were exploding, why didn't they just knock it down and rebuild? So, again, to your point, to both of your points, first of all, my apologies if the perception came across that way, because that's not my intent. It was basically the frustration of, okay, let's not be short-sighted, even in our communication of, okay, let's get this done now, what's the cost now? As opposed to years from now, where we could look back on this moment and say, well, why didn't they just build something else? So, but also to the point, I, yes, you are a committee, you put in the work, I do appreciate that, because yes, it's volunteers and everything like that. But I, I do want to see, especially in light of what Molly just said tonight, and she said it before, we are going to, even with this ADA stuff, we are going to lose the facility that they currently have. Like, we can't have kids in there at the same time that they're building, so, there's a cost for that as well. So, just, that, that was it. I'm good, thank you.
No, I don't think, you said that, I think they can still use the facility when they're working on the ADA.
Right, but not everything though, right? They're not, I mean, you can't, yeah, you can't sit in there, I mean, we had to go in the PV with hats and stuff. You can't have kids running the streets, when they're sawing stuff.
You can, you can do things the way, the way Orchard Hill is set up. There are various wings, I'll take it as two separate wings. You know, you go off the main entrance, and it splits left and right. You can do a section of the building while the other one's being occupied, or vice versa. So you can do things, you can occupy that building while it is under construction.
Oh, okay.
It's, I'm not, it's a challenge, I'm not saying it's a perfect world, it's a challenge.
Right, okay.
It can be done.
Counselor Carey?
So, Mr. Maniscalco, based on what Counselor Pendleton was asking you, I would suggest Patty Perry had done a rejection of our debt for the Quabbor meeting that took us out five years. Because we have currently about fifty-three million dollars in authorized but not spent referendums. So money that the town has said authorized, but we have not yet spent. So, she, and some of that is things like the street paving, because that can only be done a little bit at a time, right? It's like two million one year, two million the sidewalks. So when she did the Quabbor meeting rejection, she had included estimates on each year, how much of that fifty-three million was going to be spent, and therefore, what was going to be bonded the following year. So if she uses that as a basis, she may be able to incorporate the twenty million-
Yeah, we would layer this in on top of it.
Exactly. And that would give us a good sense. I mean, something that, you know, I agree, new buildings are a lot lovely, but sometimes, when you have just bill over the last twelve years for new elementary schools, our debt, while it's not outrageous, you know, we're not like the state of Illinois, who can't pay their bills, our debt, if you look at the slides, is going like this, okay? Understandably so. In twenty thirty-one, our first bonds will begin to come, peel off, and then for the next ten years, they'll peel off a little bit at a time. But until twenty thirty-one, that's not happening. So, what we have to think about is, when we look at our town today, but, but thinking about the future, what works, what gives the town the amenities they need, what supports the parks and rec, while keeping it, taking into consideration, you know, the debt that we have incurred for a very good reason, right? Some of the challenges that we are going to face this year, because courtesy of the state legislature, we have a negative fifty-one point five million dollars to our grant list, okay? And then, you're right, as the schools grow, we've been challenged by the budgets that are coming from the schools, so- So, you know, I, I think that, when we think of all those things, doing things piecemeal, and maybe, you know, not having the ideal, but still having something that really works, it is, is a good thing, and, you know, Molly said, you sat with the architect, I believe, and laid out your activities, and that these types of things would work. So, I, I do think that, thank you very much, the Public Building Commission, I think what you brought in was very good. The one thing I would suggest, before we go to the Gymnasium and Aquatic Center, is that we look at, is it possible to attach them to schools? Because I agree with you, Councilor King, when you attach things to schools, you get some reimbursement from the state that you don't get when you're doing it as Parks and Rec. But, I do like, you know, the ADA compliant information, and I think that, you know, doing that is, keeps us, you know, straight with the state, so we don't get in trouble, and by the same token, takes into consideration the fact that we already have fifty-three million dollars of referendums that are gonna come, get spent over the next, next number of years. And this, as well as, you know, what the school board is gonna bring forward, adds to all of that. And we don't have any debt relief coming anytime soon.
Thank you. Do we have a consensus on what we wanna do, send to the Public Building Commission? Maybe in our next meeting, have a resolution of next steps? I mean, Deputy Mayor, do you?
There's still many questions out there. And we have to, uh...
Um, microphone?
Yeah, I think there's still some questions that are out there that need to be answered first, and just the financial piece of things too, I think this is extremely important. And also, the cost of where, because the cost is not built in here, to move the park and rec to various locations, if need be, and Human Services, back to Human Services, and there's three departments within that structure. So, to be able to have some answers, you know? Oh, go ahead, Molly.
Mo?
I was at a speak-out.
Okay, so, you know, I, I just, I personally don't wanna do a consensus tonight. First of all, not all the council is here. Secondly, it's a lot of information that we've just engrossed and spoke about and everything else. So, I think waiting maybe to the next meeting, or a meeting in January, for us to be able to come up with, in a game plan of where we're heading in a conversation. But I don't think it's fair to the rest of the council members that couldn't make it here this evening. And I think it's to, to wait. As a whole. Okay, so then we'll do it at the next meeting.
And he won't be here at the...
And there's no rush. There's no rush, it can certainly go on in November as a referendum, there's no rush.
Any other?
Councilor Carey?
So, I mean, I know that, you know, there are some things in this that would displace Parks and Rec, but when I look at things like the fire alarm system, or site work improvement that's outside, or bathroom renovations, I mean, you know, I've been in schools where we renovate bathroom A, while we're renovating the town hall's bathroom, the other bathrooms are working, so we're, we're okay. So, I'm not sure that as we look at this, that, you know, ceiling and lighting replacements, I mean, these are, a lot of these things are things that really should not disrupt, you know, lift Parks and Rec and move them away. I mean, I don't understand how you do a roof replacement, so I'm not gonna address that one. But, I mean, it, this isn't like we're knocking down buildings.
You're working in that one little section.
Right, right. And so, it would seem that you probably, I mean, I, I don't know, I had a new kitchen put in, and, you know, they did it, I was living in the house while the kitchen was done. It was a little inconvenient, but you could do it. I'm sure many of you have had that kinda stuff done.
Yeah, I mean, since, since I was sixteen years old, I've been managing with construction companies and municipalities around the state, and other surrounding states, doing school projects, libraries, all sorts of things. And I promise you that it's never been multiple millions of dollars, I wish it was, for the sake of my living and my family, but it definitely will incur some sort of cost, but it's not, not very much. And hearing Mr. Majors say that he's confident that he'll find a way, knowing Molly, she's just got, got a great grip on everything she does. I know both departments will certainly be able to, to make it work, and also with Mr. Maniscalco behind, behind it. I, I believe that it, there, it'll be a great success. And again, give Molly everything she needs, assuming the town is obviously behind it with the referendum, but I think it would give Molly everything she needs. And it sounds like the renovation, in some way, is giving them more to the future than the knockdown and reconstruction of the way it currently is, is that what I heard you say?
Additional seven rooms.
Yeah, yeah, so, um... Yeah, I'm, I don't know.
Molly, did you wanna say something?
I think I just wanna stress again, in terms of Phase One, we can certainly, we were in whopping when they did roof construction, it was not easy. We functioned, it was not easy. So, I'm sure if the town passed Phase One, and, you know, the council and PVC were then to say, like, oh, awesome, you guys can then completely renovate that inside, to the point that we're allowed to, again, create new spaces, knock down the current classroom walls, you know, reconfigure those, you know, activity offerings, have that dedicated preschool wing, have additional parking, have more safety and security measures, have playgrounds with direct access outside those doors, things that we actually need to function as a recreation department. We would make that work, right? We would figure out how to be innovative and continue to program and move around. There would be a cost, there'd be a headache in terms of staffing and operations, but we would be, you know, we would make it work. I think it, again, we are a recreation department, we service everyone, we're not just serving kids, we're also serving adults, we're serving families. So, it's really thinking big picture for our community, so if we, again, have that vision, and the community supports it, to really completely give us a renovated space inside, to create that community space for everyone, our department would make sure that we worked hard to continue to operate and, and offer those things for our community. I do think that where we currently are, if we were just to do like the roof and the boiler, things of that nature, there's no flexibility, there's no room for growth. So, we really would have to do that full renovation piece. Because our hands are really tied in terms of what we can offer right now, right? So, it's the classrooms.
When you're saying the full renovation piece, you're, you're talking about the ADA.
So, I'm talking about ADA and like moving around the walls, so like, I think it was concept two, right? So, it talked about adding doors outside the preschool classrooms for the, for like the play space, a separate entrance for the childcare, knocking down some of the classroom walls to make flexible space with walls, basically like the walls that you can move, so that way you can turn them into meeting spaces, or additional classroom spaces, things of that nature. So, that's really what we're, what we're chatting about.
So, that's not in this cost?
The, 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 the room separations, no.
But if you, he, his original presentation, he has like concept two, so it has the floor plans.
Yeah.
And it chats, or, you can see in the design of the floor plans.
But it's not part of his eighteen million?
No, no. Eighteen million is just ADA stuff.
And the fire?
ADA stuff, yeah.
Right.
Has nothing to do with renovating to accommodate the
And the demolition of the portables. That's the only...
So, Park and Rec's renovation of this building, to make it a better Park and Rec location, is not included, this is just strictly ADA, eighteen million. That's all the eighteen million is covering.
And the portable demolition.
Which is, which we do need to, to get rid of the portables, just due to safety. But I do think, truly, when you're looking at those designs, when I sat down and talked about those programs, that's what we were able to map out, was the design of how we can make our program fit in the building, if we were to renovate the inside of the building. So, that's what I was trying to get across in my first statement, was more so like, we are more than willing to obviously run a department in any space, but we want to truly be able to function and grow with the community. And I think the designs that Tom had come up with, really do work. They offer a variety of activity spaces, they offer a safer childcare option, they offer more spaces for camp, they offer community gathering spaces, meeting rooms. And that's, like, my Park and Recreation Commission is here as well tonight, and they've seen the plans, and we've checked, we've chatted through our programs and our needs, and I know that they would echo the same things that I'm saying, in terms of, if we were to, to make the work, the space work, right? That would be something that we're looking for, for the community. And we've chatted about doing engagement sessions with the community, to see if that's truly what they want. And I do think that if we were to go down that route, we would have to show visuals, because folks don't necessarily know what we're talking about, or what we're going through, unless they see the visual pieces of what the Park and Recreation Facility could look like.
So, forgive me, so really, there's four phases. Phase one is ADA. Phase two would be to make the Park and Rec internally, with renovation of the walls and everything. And then, phase three could be the other two buildings. Is this part, is what you're referring to as a phase, in one of phase three, two or three?
Now, phase, phase one, what we were presented, what, included what Molly's talking about.
Correct, and that's what.
Oh, so it's gonna be way over twenty million, then?
He did say that, he, he did say, the, the architect and the construction company that was here did say that it was gonna be around twenty million dollars, so, maybe there's something that was left out of here?
I don't see that on here, as far as renovating the building.
If that's the case.
Yeah.
Ms. Doherty, I think you have something to add?
Yeah. Patience, please, we have a staff member here.
In the numbers that you have, that add up to the twenty million dollars, tho- those removal?
I don't know, he invited her, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's a work session, right?
I know, but...
Okay, but the, there's misinformation, Madam Mayor, that twenty million dollars does include the removal of walls. It is in that list there, you just have to kinda look for it and know where it is, as well as the playgrounds, the accessible playgrounds for the children. So, just, I just don't want it to, I want the information to be correct out there.
And this is like the third time we've been given this information as well.
Correct, correct.
That's why I keep, we keep like kicking things down the road, like I keep hearing. And I think it's just time that we start moving things forward and getting things to happen.
Do you have this with you? Can you show, can you tell me exactly where that wall demolition is?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I, I think to my point, I was just trying to advocate for our department, saying that is truly, if we were to do Phase One, that's,
Right.
you know, we will make it work operationally, as long as we can truly renovate that inside of that space.
And that's why I keep asking you if you're getting what you need.
Well...
That's the point of this whole renovation.
I just wasn't hearing, I wasn't hearing that necessarily, that conversation, so I wanted to make sure that that point was across.
Well, I, I don't see it on here, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, and I'm not sure what phase you would be in with the demolition, and revamping the usage on the inside of the building. We don't have a number, I don't see a number for that, and I don't see the concept plan, you, Madam Mayor, who said is where I'm looking?
We got, we got fire alarm, roof replacement, site work?
No, 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 on here you pointed something out.
Oh. Floor plans, lower main level floor plan, concept one.
Concept one, okay.
That's the phase one.
Okay. So, with that said, and as you're referring to, with knocking out and renovating the walls and so on, and making flexible space, or whatever it's called, I don't see any of that in this number here, the twenty million, I only see here, just ADA, that's all I see.
It says new accessible place gate on, on the back, hundred fifty thousand dollars. There's, there's the place gate.
That's place gate, but we're looking for the wall demolition between the two, like...
The renovation that the Park and Rec needs for their programming.
New paving, drives and parking, three hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Let's see if she can find it.
Again, it's, I mean, it's, it's all matching what we've been presented twice before.
Right, but the tear down of the walls, between two classrooms, I think that's what Molly's saying.
So, if, if I could, if I could address that?
Yeah.
So, if you look on the far right-hand side of, on page two or three, where they've got mechanical systems replacement, ceiling and lighting, that's a gross square footage account. The building is forty-seven thousand square feet. This number in here accounts for forty-seven thousand square feet. It may not call out every little nut and screw and window and detail, door demolition. The numbers that were presented to PVC were included, first phase would be twenty million dollars. That is what it was estimated for us in today's dollars, maybe twenty million dollars to construct that Phase One, Option Two, or any of those options, not Phase One.
And it's in here demolishing a wall between two classrooms.
Says it right here.
It's, there's a gross up factor in there, so it doesn't spell out each and every line item, but it's, it's included in there as an overall.
Is it that two hundred fifty thousand dollar line of miscellaneous upgrades to support the work?
That's mechanical systems replacement.
That's what you said in that section, though, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay.
And there's, and there's things in here, remember, the scheme that was presented to us of, had a lot of glass and things like that, Molly had worked with the architect, we may not build that with all that glass, so it may be less than this, we don't know. It's just, this was one architect's vision that came up with it. One of the comments that came back to us from planning and zoning was the same concept that had all that glass and the giant, you know, foyer, we might not build that, but it's just one architect's vision, that a concept that we knew that the site would work, it was appealing, so that's what we're presenting to you.
Okay, so, lower main level floor plan, concept one, which is all this, is this.
Any of the concepts?
You'll also, right, you'll have the upstairs as well, so you'll get, you'll get the whole building.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask that a different way.
Okay.
So, these walls in the renovation of the fitness area, and creating all these little walls, and breaking down these walls, and fixing bathrooms, and changing all the internal, not the mechanicals, not the, just internals, is part of the twenty million?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I couldn't find it, I thought this was just ADA. No, okay. Okay, thank you. So, this is all Phase One, which is concept, whatever concept we choose?
Correct.
Thank you, appreciate you. So, back to Ms. Keys, are you comfortable with that? In hearing that your renovations will take place for your programming that you have to have done, are you okay with hearing that with the twenty million? Because I was a little concerned.
You're concerned of?
I was a little concerned that it wasn't included in the twenty million.
Well, that's why I wanted to get up here and clarify, the portions of the renovations. Again, I did sit down with Tom to go over the program.
Right.
Because, again, looking towards expanding our programs, but also ultimately making sure that the community has access to the space and safety, those were all conversations that we had, and we sat down, we walked through the property, we talked about how we could really enhance our current offerings as well, with this current space. Because for me, it was hard to vision that with it being an old school, but we kinda talked through what some other Parks and Recreation facilities have done, and somewhere square footage. So, I do feel confident that if we took one of those designs, our staff would be able to make it into a community space for everyone. I think it has good growth opportunity. Can I promise that in ten years, that we won't need more space? No, I can't promise that. I would be more concerned on the gym side of things than our, our room space. But I do think this would be a really nice opportunity to invest in Parks and Recreation, and then really invest in the community.
Thank you.
So, just a final, you don't wanna do a consensus on anything? Microphone, please? Sorry.
Again, back to the question on the consensus, and we still have some answers out there, especially with the financial impact that this is gonna have on our community, but we also have some council members that, you know, this is a work session, we don't have to make a decision on anything, and they can come back, and we can, you know, discuss at that time.
When Mr. Maniscalco gets us the numbers?
Correct.
With the, with the twenty million, what that does on the phase act?
Right, right. And then, our council members can watch this, and then they can go ahead and, you know, come up with any of the questions that they may have.
All right, and since the agenda's already set for the next meeting, possibly the January sixth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but Deputy Mayor won't be here, remember that. Okay.
All right.
Anyway, thank you.
Are we all, uh, Counselor Balboni? Are you all set? Everybody all set? Okay. Motion to adjourn? We have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.